This is a private company that's interested to go out and see if there's enough wind blowing to even consider this as a project to to move forward. So when I think about like all the risks to development and whatnot, I would actually personally put this pretty low in that because it's investigative use studies. Maybe they don't find anything, maybe they do, and then they've got a whole process that they're gonna have to work through. And that's when we get to comment on transmission lines and towers and visual impacts and effects of wildlife and all of those kinds of things. All the rest of this stuff is just data collection. That at best will will be publicly available and we'd have some great valley specific environmental information. For in the next two years that maybe we could request becomes available to to community groups. And at worst, they go away and and they're not able to do anything and we don't hear anything about any of it. Well, that's how I how I see this kind of stuff. I also sit in a pretty privileged spot to understand the interworkings of some of these types of projects.
Thank you. In those call for proposals, there was some indication that they were making this as a a project that could be shared with indigenous groups. They haven't mentioned anything in this case. Do you know anything about?
Yeah, the call the call for power preferentially selected projects that were in at least fifty percent partnership with indigenous groups. But there were a whole bunch of projects that were selected that had no indigenous partnership because there wasn't somebody that was interested or available. Who knows all the reasons, but the but if you had an indigenous partnership, your project was almost guaranteed. It was almost a shoe in. You were about to the to the front of the line. This, they don't mention anything really. They've got that small section on engagement with First Nations, but that doesn't really tell us anything about whether or not they want to partner or they're looking at doing that. And if they did or didn't, they'd still have the same regulatory process to to go through. They'd still be held to the same lands, water and air authorizations that would be needed to make one of these projects happen. One change would be how the Crown would maybe consult or engage with the indigenous group through that process, but all those authorizations.
I might add, as you say, Hydro just it's B C Hydro, the province.
Yeah.
They have to meet their twenty thirty, twenty fifty green energy targets. So they've had their call to power. They have another one. There's also Fortis doing exactly the same thing, expressions of interest. We have a potential energy project further along, be sure, geothermal. That's to an interesting stage. Like, I think we had a conversation about this at two o'clock this afternoon because we had our economic development update on geothermal. I think it was something like ten out of eleven of the ones that B C Hydro selected for this one that closed in September. Ten out of eleven, something like that had indigenous engagement. It's more than half by a long shot. So that'll become an important factor. Something we also speculated about, what we saw in microhydro, when there was a potential for, you know, purchasing microhydro, a couple of consulting firms went up, licensed hundreds of creeks. And they never developed anything. They just were going to flip a license. So it's something to keep your ear to the ground on. If this is gonna happen, could be happening in geothermal, we're working with this. Across the province and federally, people might try and go in and scoop, do enough investigation, license for an investigation, then try and hold some other kind of license and flip it and maybe develop nothing. So it's very tenuous whether or not they can come up with any of these. Concerning that people who did hold the ge- the microhydro licenses actually obstructed others from doing very small microhydro projects because the barrier of buying that license out before you got started was was too high for the really small project. So I hope we don't see that. And then the other kind of fun speculation we had is because Eagle Plains has been in there so much, like there's no substation, there's no transmission lines, there's nothing. Maybe they'll have a little tiny mine in there. It's part of that. That's the northeast or northwest story, right? Lots of mining potential and no electricity. Yeah, so it could be highly speculative. They're looking at places where they may try to just get a toll hold. And then maybe develop nothing. See how long they can hold the license. Microhydros, I think the province expenditure extinguished a lot of them in twenty sixteen. They modernized water.
Yeah.
Say, hey, you guys have been sitting on these for way too long. They're gone. If you've got a serious project, come back. So that'd be something to look for. The other thing I was interested in is if this license will then be amended to look east or west. The ridge to the west, once you get up high enough, it's slightly higher, you know, below below wouldn't shoot.
Yep.
And now you start maybe into another drainage. So another thing just to pay attention to, once they get up there, like these aren't small sticks they're gonna put in. These are tall test towers. You gotta wonder where else they may start looking. So it's it's not bad to have enough community interest to say, well, what is this now? And what might it shape up to be and where else could it end up going? Find out there's roads in there today, but there's not roads everywhere else. Right? That's partly I'm curious and I kind of hope that even if it was online, it would be a problem.
Yeah, I agree. And I think like that road piece, like that's from an exploration point, that's the biggest disturbance that that they're gonna have, right? Because they're pushing in new access. That's gonna change wildlife use patterns. That's gonna change human use patterns, right? There's all kinds of things that come up. But yeah, yeah, but all of this seems to be that they're using existing roads and not finding any new. Yeah, you always wanna look at an application like this and be like, what are these? Okay, what they say they're doing and their purpose is one thing, but what could they do with what they're applying? Like the activities they're applying to do, right? And it just still seems fairly benign in that respect. Like archaeological surveys and water holes and fish habitat is just seeing if there's streams there.
Yeah.
That's all they're gonna do. Counting birds.
So they could be doing what they were considering with the smallest guy hydro. They could be just tying up this location or?
Yeah, I don't know what the next stages are in something like this. You have to have a license for occupation of some sort.
So they they go through, they prove whether or not there's sufficient plan. And if there is, then they would wait for an application for the call called power or try and partner with Fortis or figure out that purchasing agreement. Once they had that purchasing agreement in place, then they'd be able to move through to the authorizations, right? So then you know, yeah, and and that would be that would be the building and you'd be looking at building those towers. But those that that authorization process would be under the Lands Act, under the Forest Tenures Act, under the Water Sustainability Act and under the Environmental Management Act. At least I think I don't think there'd be any others, but those there would be these applications that would be required under those four that would all have the requirement for public engagement, public consultation, community engagement. And so there'd be community meetings held by each of those ministries through the application process. The proponent would have to show up at those ones to fend off the pitchforks and torches because that's where that stuff.
I was kind of expecting to have a little.
The more important, the investment side is the degree of subsidy offered. I mean, Ontario offered twenty some cents a kilowatt hour when they rolled out their solar panel. One of their solar panels everywhere in Ontario, every barn, every shed.
Thirty nine cents.
So now when Mercer Selgar was renewing their electricity provision agreement from because they have so much excess heat and steam. They went from six cents, somebody who works there fairly high up told me they were offered three cents a kilowatt hour from six. When the market rate was up at nine and ten. Now, what that first move back states now said is they did better than the initial offer. But that's what will drive these things. If it's a crazy subsidy like Ontario, it might happen. If it's not, you have no substation, no power line in its remote area. We're not known for high wind. The National Research Council Energy Maps don't show us as a wind area. It shows a geothermal.
Yeah.
And hydro, but not wind. So the investment potential is gonna depend on the subsidy.
So for me, it was all about the public engagement piece, the whole cradle to grave conversation, which nobody seems to have when it comes to green energy. We're on the hook as taxpayers, no matter how you shake it. So there is, as you pointed out, Wade, there should be a process in which, depending on how far they go down the line, they should be engaging the public, but they don't have to. So I read the regulations and it's up to the company. So I think it's important that who's ever wishing to do the work out there recognizes that this community will expect that conversation. And so I I I kind of did a little research on the left bridge models. And you know, their V one hundred, they're a hundred and forty meters tall and and they're huge monst- monstrosities of units. I'm not against at all coming up with alternative ways of power. But what I'm tired of hearing about is the life cycle being typically twenty years. And then there's no decommissioning plan. There's no bond that says when we have to take this down, it's gonna get paid for and not be stuck with the taxpayer is paying for it. So that's got to be a part of that engagement. The other thing, when you run the numbers on the lifespan, the twenty year asset cycle with left bridge, their payback based on current power market right now is after almost eleven years. So the first eleven years is paying for this. And then their profit portion becomes, you know, nine years or less. And then they have to look at taking blades down or changing out bearings and changing out generators and that sort of thing. But if it gets decommissioned, who's paying for that? What? Where is that built into the agreement? Who is gonna be monitoring that? Is there gonna be bonds laid down so that we as local in the community as taxpayers don't end up paying for that? Because when it comes to the blades right now, there is no way of decommissioning the blade or recycling the blades. There's no incentive to because it's too cheap to build them. They're better just to leave them on the ground or or dig a hole and bury them. So in our environment, in our community, that's not, that's not, I don't think that's the reasonable thing to do. So what is your decommissioning plan? These are the questions that in a public engagement session, much like with the cell towers, they don't have to engage. But under pressure, they will engage. But for them, it's a win because people then get educated as to what it is that they're really doing and what the the opportunity really is. And what are they gonna do when it's all said and done? So and unfortunately, our group, we don't have the ability, even in our level of government, to be able to say to them, you must have a public engagement. We can send a letter in and ask for it, but there's no guarantee. And so I think it's important that everybody kind of thinks about the cradle to grave on all this. Because it hasn't been thought about when it comes to not just green energy, any kind of energy. Traditionally, we're not real good at calculating what the true cost is and how we're going to have a disposal or decommissioning plan, that sort of thing. So those are the things that come to my mind when I kind of think this through and I think that's, oh, for the left bridge one, if you're interested, Black Spring Ridge Wind Farm and Hellkirk Wind Farms out of Painters County, those are the ones I researched. And I happen to know people in Painters. I called them up. Yeah, got a little bit more information on it, but so that's, yeah, that's my contribution to the conversation.
They're really good comments. I spent a fair amount of time in northeast B C, working in the in coal properties and permitting the installation of wind towers in northeast B C. The the bond system, there is a bond system that comes through the Lands Act, through your license of occupation. Whether or not it's appropriate enough or or comprehensive enough, I think is that that's those are great questions. And I think that's absolutely something that would need to come up. The the way that I've seen these types of applications handled in the northeast is is that the proponent is expected to hold public meetings and that expectation is coming from the the ministries that are issuing the authorizations. And so they'll form across industry or cross ministry working groups where they'll have their technical experts available at public meeting along with the proponent and the proponent's consulting team to be able to speak to the the project. The proponent will lay out a plan and then the community will be able to ask questions and and sort of talk through the scenarios. And probably not required, but it certainly is the operating expectation for these types of developments.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
That that's like, I've only been a part of a couple of them and not in not down south here. So I can't say wow, we'll be here, but.
Well, and then to that point, how do you as a community know that 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 is a concern to the ministries, in fact, that they will not forget you, you know? So but that's up to, for me, that's up to me to keep watching.
Yeah. And so up up north, what we what we make sure happens is there's ads that go out on the radio and ads that go in the newspaper. It fires and go around town in advance, much like we would organize for a a community type meeting here. And then it's and then those they'll be at a hall or rec center or a hotel conference room and that's where it'll.
Good. And there's two, there's two projects, actually. There is one that Roger got the information on and Gary got one for Duck Creek. He didn't get Duck Creek. So Duck Creek is B C Hydro and it's a private firm. That's, so there's two that are investigating right now. Of course, when I walk around my place and go in, where are you gonna get the wind from? Got to be a lot of wind up in the mountain to be able to justify turning those blades enough to be able to generate. These ones down there are one, one point nine megawatt. They're pretty big. But the problem they're having is they're not running all the time, even in left.
Well, that little valley that comes down through the Goat River Canyon and out through into Eric's saying it's super windy. Twice a year for a month.
Yeah. Yeah, we get that wind too.
Yeah. But then like the rest of the year, it's like quiet.
So their investigation may show it's not feasible.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I, so I'll again, I look at this kind of stuff and I'm like, oh, this spurs a whole bunch of like economic opportunities. But this is because that's literally how I maybe call my mind. So I I look at a thing like this, there's no roads planned. It's an existing access area and it's all investigative use. But the community might.
The Duck Creek one is one that I'll watch because yes, there is some, Canfor has some access closer towards the past the the what do you call that line that's typically not forced. Yeah, that that line. But that's where we have a lot of tributaries coming down to eventually feed the Duck Creek water system. And with the fires that happened there back in the forties, I believe it was, it took a long time for that to stabilize. That they had clean, relatively clean water coming down. So you get started getting a lot of activity up there. And and when you say that they're not required to do an environmental assessment, that's wrong.
Yeah.
It's wrong.
Yeah.
You know, it's it it needs to be done, particularly if you're looking at a watershed.
Yeah. I mean, as a consultant, I'm happy to do environmental assessments. They get expensive, they complicate it. So to clarify now, they're still gonna have to do like assessments of sorts of one form or another. Environmental assessment certificate process is like a massive bureaucratic nonsense, looking at you.
Yeah.
Um, but the but like our our skilled government bureaucrats will come up with a good alternative, I'm sure for the wind power. Yeah. And then like they still have are subject to all the same provincial permits.
Yeah.
That they that they would be even without doing the environmental assessment. And each one of those permits essentially has elements of an assessment in it. Usually when you're preparing those permits, you're pulling information that you've already developed from your environmental assessment to be able to create those permit applications. So you essentially have two authorizations for most major projects in B C.
Kind of expanding on what they've already pre-writ. They've identified their streams could be fish, could be elk, could there, you know?
Yeah, they're still gonna have to do all that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I will finish off by saying this was kind of important to table tonight. Because it's hard to get. So I visited with Creston Community Force as well. And asked to, you know, let's have a chat up, put that on your agenda. Let's have a chat about it. Because I'm not the expert. I know what my concerns are. And for me, cradle to grave and just give me public engagement opportunity. And that's that's the big push for me.
Roger, any other questions or considerations or discussion you want us to have or consider?
No, really good information. I I, you know, when I heard the Crown land applications are not generally, they don't want to run those by this. What's your experience there, Gary? If the regionals district has a decision-making authority required, that's something we would normally run through our advisory planning. Like if it's a rezoning or a developer or something like that. Things that we don't decide on, it's really more to be aware of. And you kind of had this back for how much time does staff have to run everything that possibly runs across the regional districts from calendar past people in general, when what we say or do may not change anything. So, you know, most of the directors, I don't know Shelley in the other areas, if we ask for something, you go on an agenda, it pretty well goes up. But, you know, there's, you're the you have you're the direct community voice to the board. Doesn't matter what we say. You have a voice to the board through your minutes on certain things, but not on it. Because otherwise, four hundred other people might say, we want a direct voice to the board. I want a direct voice to the board on whatever, pick something. Because we can't have, so if it's something that's regional district business, the board has to make a decision on. We have enough committees in commission. You have a voice. Your minutes go to the board and it says, that's what you think the board should do, not what we should. All this other stuff, it's just too much. So.
And creating awareness.
And well, the awareness is great because, you know, I look at it and say, why are they or what else has ever happened there that makes it interesting? Well, the only thing I'm aware of is pretty extensive mineral claim exploration there and adjacent to it. So adjacent to it, that's the area A and more sensitive in terms of watershed, well, not more sensitive. Arrow's a pretty sensitive watershed, but you know, so you gotta wonder why is this proponent looking at this site? And it's just going to be aware if you hear something else.
Yeah, you kind of wonder about that, hey? Why this? I mean, I look at this and I used to do the G I S exercise, identifying certain slopes, certain elevations and broad scaling wind preservative directions and said, bad area.
And and a road going to the top.
There's a road going to the top. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it makes your investigative.
Access.
Access.
So the only unique thing, and that's because of the mineral exploration.
Yeah.
And the law in the law, and there's all the beetle kills. Every tree immediately help is gone.
So then I I think, Roger, for this committee, like, we're certainly happy to advise you on these sorts of things. Or you can bring them to us to have our discussion about, but maybe that doesn't need to be part of the formal A H C meetings.
Yeah. While we're all here, we have a few other ones. Gary, would you mind talking a little bit about the geothermal geothermal project that you've been working on?
If you want, five minute cold notes. It's no secret. There's hot. There's hot springs all across the Goodneys. And, you know, National Research Council has energy maps. Where is a good place for this, that or the other? When you look at the energy maps, I have one on here somewhere, but then it wouldn't be five minutes. We have one, not just ground six feet down, which is pretty warm. We have deep seated fluid moving upwards, some of its hot springs, some of its warm springs, without a doubt. Because we had over the eons, all of these volcanic island chains out in the Pacific. The tectonic movement crushed over and over and over again into the continental mass and upheaved. Some people believe it turned over. Some believe that's not the thing. It's just tilting. But there's fractures that way. Then there is fractures the other that come north, south. So if you can find the right minerals, like trace elements and stuff that you that that will signal probably there's a well fractured body or mass below you, that's where you want to drill it. You want to take high volume, high temperature water from the ground. And so this investigation is supported by B C geof- uh, B C geothermal, B C B C and federal organizations that look at geothermal potential. It's in its fifth phase right now. And they they've gotten it down to what's worth doing. They've done all kinds of ground testing, drone testing. Uh, well, there's a warm spring across the creek.
Yeah.
No one's free. And then there's other warm spots across certain ridges, big granitic intrusion, sort of near Great Creek north to Crawford Bay. See, there's all the other, you know, there's trying to think of the proper terms. There's there's all the indications. You look at logging growth cuts and everything else, you can see the fracturing. How complex it is, what directions it is to just say, you're gonna start looking at stuff. This is officially fractured. You're probably gonna see some areas that are easy to drill. And then there's a long loop down mine, which was too hot and uncomfortable, but contaminated because it extended across. So you're not gonna necessarily pull water out of there. And of course, there's hot springs in Ainsworth, the Cusp, Hellsea and other smaller, lesser known hot springs.
So is is this project the proponent that's looking at?
There's, there's.
These all over or they focus off?
Several spots because they're tapped additional money where we're gonna look at a model. We're gonna look at multiple sites. There's a warm spot sort of there. There's a warm spot around Salmo that's pretty big. There's one, of course, around the cusp, the two Wilmore hot springs. So it's modeling how to look at the general highlights we put and look for the more specific indicators that it's worth maybe doing the test drill. So it's it's, you know, it's being insert, it's supported at U V, uh, U of C, U of A.
So is it a government initiative or?
No, it's being supported by a lot of post-secondary institutions. It's being driven by a group of geologists.
Okay.
So it's.
Do they have, do they operate under an operating name or business name?
Not a business.
No, business name.
No, so your investors will have to. But there's published data and it's and it's it's more sensible to me to look at that kind of potential for energy in an area where it's definitely we're different, not the same as the entire country. Look across the entire Canada, we are warmer than anywhere else in the country. And there's a few other big projects in B C, some of the more the castings and below that are, you know, very well advanced, yes.
So you're looking at trying to find some more um, warm water. This is about capturing the the warm potential, the heat from underground.
Where you drill in the general vicinity, you're gonna hit pretty hot water. Is it above or below eighty Celsius? And is it sufficient volume to do drug direct electrical generation?
Meant to build another hot spring.
You only use oil, that would be the easiest thing to do. But people like natural springs, right? The hot spring would be the easiest thing. You gotta talk about commercial use, the heating systems.
Because geothermal is is nothing new. It's unique in this application, but I mean, you see geothermal in the prairies easily, you know, you can just drill down and you got seventy degrees constant all the time. On coasts, on the coastal, they throw a grid map out, like a grid structure out and they can recycle the the heat from the ocean. I mean, it's it's it happens in a lot of places. This one's unique because it's the heat side that's of interest.
Yeah, that's correct. Iceland's pretty much powered by heat.
Yeah, well, that's, yes.
But any, any, like with water, you can take the heat out or put the heat in sort of thing, like it's.
The ideal is if you can pull off enough heat at the right, you know, volume and temperature, you generate electricity directly. Then maybe in the second and third loop, you can still generate electricity.
Or cool.
And then beyond that, you can look at either district heating or agriculture heating. And aside from that, if you live in the right place, which we do, you can create a spark. You do multiple things. You would just say, oh, we want to just get a little bit of electricity out of the ground. You gotta say, well, how many boxes can you take? And when you have an indigenous park, interest in the earth, it maybe has a hot spring.
Well, it already has.
That has backcountry operations and there's applications for year-round backcountry. Uh in the Brussel, it's not the self-critics on our side. Yeah, all those things take, all those things, yeah. And and it's the largest backcountry application that B C's ever seen, that particular one, right? So you gotta think about all the things that would connect Ainsworth to another spa or occasional home base, maybe backcountry. And generating power and or do something for agriculture or plant for acres cheaper than it is here.
Yeah.
Or somewhere else, you go a lot of boxes, so that's the at. That's the current phase. Anyway, it's a good project, I think, if nothing works out of it except. The chemistry and the leading signs that this is worth even looking at this area, that's something someone could pick up their own self. Pick up more broadly around the Caspalsian, look for the next hotspot. Or the next potential to, you know, we're talking drilling kilometer to. Not two hundred meters like a water well, so you could mobilize rig, it doesn't exist here. If you're gonna bring it from the Prairies, you're gonna get a walk through the Alcoa tunnel. You gotta come, you gotta think about how you're gonna get it here, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
To get a rig here, drill that kind of hole. Without falling, so if you're gonna do it, you'd wanna look at any sites that would use that same. Um. But if if it needs sense. Anyways, uh to me, it's it's a little more sense than wind.
For our backyard, but who knows?
Interesting. That was five and a half minutes.
I know, I know.
But you asked a question.
Yeah, I was trying to take some of that time.
I'm waiting if I may, I just have a question, remember five or six, seven years ago, there was an application for a solar farm out by Yacht? Did I hear that?
I've heard about it.
But nothing ever happened, I assume? It was out on this side, I think where the rest or the rest stop is back there. I remember seeing that application in the paper or something, but obviously nothing ever happened.
You kept to look at Sullivan Sullivan Mine One as a good example, I mean, brown field dirt cheap dirt.
Yeah.
Substation was there, transmission lines were there, it used to suck the power incident, push power out. Huge subsidies, investment, C D T and others. And last time I talked to the mayor of Kimberly about it. Not a sweet deal as they thought, even though they're that high elevation and they get less cloud, like. You wouldn't do that, it could be late.
Yeah.
Morning cloud all the time, doesn't burn off till mid-afternoon some days. With all the pluses that Kimberly had, it's still, I think, not the golden goose that they might have thought of. So if you're gonna drop into a valley where you have a way more cloud.
Yeah.
And lower sun angles and stuff like that because of, you know, just natural train. That I think again, was that somebody fishing for government subsidy because there was so much money in Ontario?
Yeah.
That they thought they couldn't lose, this is where these projects have to be more. Carefully screened before we start giving tax dollars away.
Yeah, the money, the money's still there, the subsidy's still there, but Gary's right, it's your, the backyard is a conducive. You see it more so on the Prairies right now doing well. Doing weller. Um because it just have more sun and it's flat, easy to install, easy to tag into, a lot of more crossroads and and backroads tie into power. Uh out here would be a challenge, it's not real sunny out here in the winter time. And um you know, those panels, these panels up here on the roof and the.
Yeah, the government right here, I was gonna find it.
And uh so we're finally, we've finally been asked long enough and we're getting uh granted access to the software so we can see how it's performing. And um um on the initial side of things, um. It needs to do better to be able to make its payback.
Um. This makes any sense, up there, you're gonna get zip most of the year because of the ridges, then you're gonna have some potential, then you're gonna get sick. Also darkness, although some panels apparently work on moonlight, I see. Whereas if you're in the Prairies, right? You're you're gonna get something different because you you're not hemmed in. So there's software that'll tell you what this is producing instantaneously, average daily, average monthly. Is it meeting expectations? The expectations work if it's only gonna produce like nothing, then a little bit, then nothing. And it's coming to ninety odd percent of that expectation based on a computer model, but nowhere near the capacity of the panels if they were under direct sunlight, only like a fraction of that. So again, you gotta think about, this was if the 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 local government through C D T, except we still had to pay money to put it up there. So now we have a structure on a flat roof. And being a builder and an engineer, I hate to see that unless the roof was designed to hold that structure so that down the road it won't impact the membrane. Stole the rice buildup, want to have some unintended consequence, some other weak point, leakage point. So again, if you're gonna do this stuff, build your building that, you know, accommodates up upfront. So yeah, our solar array here and the one on the uh, is the one on the the uh.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber building, does anyone have stats on that?
No, for the longest time, they didn't, uh Forrest, uh who is in that business. Um is going to was gonna tap into it just to download how its efficiencies are. Um not even sure how much they're able to sell back to the grid, uh and that's probably one of the better locations that that you could have.
This is something like two percent of the building's usage potential, not, you know, that's with no one that potentially is not taking a little bit and something seasonally adjusted. Uh two percent of the building.
How many kilowatts up there?
I don't know, a couple dozen.
How many megawatt is it, do you recall?
Uh.
Three hundred and fifty watts a panel?
You didn't go that far.
Couple of years ago, I actually had a contractor come in to look at Fuller panels. Because of Arrow Creek, you've got the mountains on both sides. Also, I had picked up a fur that passes the shadow, I need to have to get ten ten kilowatts, which is my annual. Uh use of the thirty some panels or maybe closer to forty, I can't remember. Where if you're in the open, you might only need twenty fifteen, so made quite a difference, it just didn't make sense.
This is forty one thousand eight hundred kilowatt hours per year up to, so say it's. Three thirty six thousand five hundred, so then it'd be a hundred kilowatt hours per day. Um but this building uses a whole lot more electricity, now we have ice making and pump fans and you name it.
If they have G I C meetings.
Yeah, these meetings, it's yeah, hot air from a politically politically uh motivated.
If only we could generate energy from that.
Doesn't compensate for that, the entire energy draw that this building requires.
Yeah, if we could put a heat pump on you, we'd be laughing.
We uh, there's probably ten fifteen by four, there might be sixty pounds up there, so.
Sixty at four.
Four hundred.
That's not easy.
See that, yeah, it's it's a it's a good little slice, but nowhere near. If we built the building, it would accommodate the entirety of it, but we didn't.
So twenty four thousand?
I.
If it was.
I've I've been thinking about putting together a resolution. Uh in regards to solar panels. Uh there's a couple of neighbors up in Canyon who have got some big arrays and looked into it myself, had a contractor come out. Uh estimate, you know, what sort of a system that you would recommend? Uh we got talking about um. The payback of the energy that you don't use, the rate you get paid back. How many years would take to recoup your investment? As opposed to uh. In Ontario, and he was telling me the Ontario model, uh where. You know, they are paying back thirty nine cents per kilowatt hour. But that was um decided on because they were trying to avoid the uh nuclear option.
Yeah.
And and so they they incentivized uh people putting in uh systems. And it just took off way more than Ontario I thought it would.
But then, you know what happened when they killed the subsidies?
Yeah, after ten years, the agreements expire and then.
Well, the the whole industry.
It is that right?
That and the power went up substantially in Ontario.
Well, they they haven't yet, haven't they? Because they were still Google it to see what they're paying, it says thirty, still thirty nine cents and and there's.
They might still be on contracts that are committed to that, yeah, but this was all introduced in like. Two thousand five?
Under wind more than a decade ago, yeah.
No, two thousand eight-ish, but then.
And people were paying off their investments in like eight years or something, uh.
Hmm, I can't see that happening, oh, they're subsidized, which means that the taxpayer paid it.
It ended up, yeah. It was.
Well, this contractor said people were buying property just to put in solar arrays and they were paying off the, you know, the system.
Don't kid yourself, the taxpayers pay for, and generally speaking, wind power, correct me if I'm wrong, and your green energy. Uh when it comes to the stabilization of of grid, uh the greens right now are. I looked in, did a uh uh video with Australia and the cost of uh the 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 cost of the the grid is gone up. When they're using uh this, the uh the green stabilization or the green uh energy because of the darkness and the lack of wind. You still have to have uh generators, generation. Um and then that complicates the cost in the grid.
Yeah, except B C Hydro is in the and Portis in a wonderful position, they can store an extra inch of water.
Yeah, no problem, yeah.
And then use it at at those.
Through the hydro dam.
Yeah, I mean, it the.
Our batteries, that is.
Our battery system is being inch by inch careful monitored.
Yeah, and where where is that uh sophisticated that we can actually control that to grid manage our, at least our portion of the grid?
Yeah, so so we're unique.
Yeah.
Compared to the Prairies or those parts of the state.
Does the province have uh an interest in incentivizing uh? More solar panel put in by rural property owners, say, if they have objections, they're trying to reach with green and green energy. Uh and the extra power that they're having to buy now. Uh from Alberta is coal-fired.
They love states. Hmm, it's not for gas in Alberta, it's not coal.
Well, there, you can go on the grid, Alberta, they'll tell you the percentage of coal, gas, mixed fuel, their coal is pretty low now. I've gone on it a few times in the last.
It's very low because the N D P came in and told them that you have to switch it around.
So they're using.
Can I, can I just make one off?
I'm not, I'm doing the minutes.
If if you would like, though, I just want to offer you an escape.
Okay.
You can like.
You want me to shut down the meeting?
You can, yeah. I uh just, we've been here for an hour, uh so if you need the official capacity, you know, then you drive.
You want to call the meeting?
So uh.
At seven fifty six.
Seven fifty six, yeah.
And thank you for coming out today.
Yeah.
I was forced to.
Forced to. Yeah, so there is no uh. Anyway, thanks for, thanks for coming and helping out with us and our courageous demands.
No, it's all good, there are no demands.